Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, March 20 regular meeting of the Harnett County Board of Commissioners. This time I will call the meeting to order and I will also ask for Commissioner Brooks Matthews to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our Father, we do thank for this day. We thank for this opportunity we have to meet together to talk about issues which affect our county and our citizens. We pray that you be with each of us tonight, grant us wisdom as we discuss and make decisions going forward. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Will now consider any additions and deletions to the published agenda?
A motion we approve the agenda as published.
I have a motion and a second. In order to approve the agenda as published, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, at this time I will now open the floor for public comment. Period consisting of 30 minutes. Each commenter will have three minutes to present. First on the list is Ms. Elizabeth Longman.
Good evening, everybody. Elizabeth Longman, 234 Hamilton Road. I have two, maybe three, quick things I'd like to say in my three-minute period here. First of all, to read for you the findings, or at least what I feel is the key finding of Judge Vince Rosier, Superior Court Judge, regarding the election protests. It says in number seven, "Even though there is evidence in the allegations that sheriff may have violated rules, protocols, and all laws," so they found there's evidence in the allegations related to electioneering outside of an election poll site, "the law, as it is currently written, does not warrant a full hearing when the alleged context of the violations lack a showing to be outcome determinative." So what they're basically saying is, yes, the sheriff did wrong, but because the laws are written the way they are right now, they cannot go after him under election law. And that would be the key point, that under election law, we cannot go after him. Second point I'd like to make is, when we took this to our state representatives, because it's literally just to adjust the law, we noticed that Senator Jim Burgin had little packets he gives out for the opiate crisis, little bags containing gloves, you know, needle exchanges. There's the little Narcan things that are like $48, one of them, the other one is $5. And these are things that he just gives people who you know are caught up in that opiate crisis. It's the best help that we can offer them as members of the public. And he just gives them out without judgment for free. Says it's a start for them knowing that there's a way out of this. I wish there'd be more of that available, not only from our leadership, but somewhere in the county where we could have things that we could give to those who are suffering during the opiate crisis, so that maybe we wouldn't lose as many lives and maybe we wouldn't have to lock them up in jail all the time. If they find out that there's a path to help, and those packets, I think UNC University, University of, Carolina University, put together those packets and it has a QR code where they can scan to access help. It's really great work Senator Burgin has done for North Carolina. And we in Harnett are not taking advantage of it to help our local citizens. We sent him there to do the work, he's done the work. Now let's bring the work back here and help our citizens. We just went through a horrible crisis dealing with dogs and all of that, and someone in mental health, not mental health, but opioid crisis. And the dog catcher says she goes to so many homes, no one thinks about what happens to the animals in an opioid-addicted home.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Mr. Allen Longman.
Yes, hello. My name is Allen Longman, at 234 Hamilton Road in Barn Level. The reason why I'm speaking today is a couple, behalf of a couple of things. We can start off with the drug problem, and we can start off with the jail system. The jail system should have a social worker assigned there so people could be instructed what to do and how, and what to do when they get out, and what their rights are when they're there. The other thing is, that the money aspect that the party has been looking at is incorrect. The real aspect is that it costs you more money doing it the way you're doing it, over $150 million a year. That you need to supply people with treatment, mental health treatment, while they're in jail and while they're in prison. That will save you money, because trying to get it on the outside is nearly impossible when you have a lifetime of criminals being born. You don't need, you need to treat them at the time. The social worker is extremely important, because you need scaffolding for when they come out, so they are actually prepared for the world beforehand, where they can decent, know what to expect when they get on the outside, and what help is available for them. The other problem I have is with the water tower that you're having. If it's from groundwater, are you taking the steps necessarily to make sure that the groundwater is clean? Are you filtering the water that's going into the tank? And are you expanding a little bit on the chemicals that are in the water supply? For instance, medical waste and medical water is a major problem in our drinking water. It affects our health. We need to look at that more. Also, when it comes to mental health, we need more established businesses which deal with mental health problems that are better. We need more competition. We need also to have stronger laws made. One of the problems in mental health in the state of North Carolina, rated one of the four worst in the nation, is that they think they're allowed to stock people's drugs and force them to come to a therapy, to come see their psychiatrist. Unfortunately, when they do that, they don't always have transportation, especially rural areas, where they could be there on time, because there's no public transportation. The other thing, they are stopped with the drugs. They end up being problems in society because they don't have their medication. And we all know from even Harnett County, we've encountered trouble and even deaths because of it. That they don't, they're not getting treated, and that they're being shown
Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, March 20 regular meeting of the Harnett County Board of Commissioners. This time I will call the meeting to order, and I will also ask for Commissioner Brooks Matthews to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our Father, we do thank for this day. We thank for this opportunity we have to meet together to talk about issues which affect our county and our citizens. We pray that you be with each of us tonight, grant us wisdom as we discuss and make decisions going forward. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Will now consider any additions and deletions to the published agenda?
At the motion, we approve the agenda as published.
I have a motion and a second in order to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda.
Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Alright, at this time, I will now open the floor for public comment, period consisting of thirty minutes. Each commenter will have three minutes to present. First on the list is Ms. Elizabeth Longman.
Good evening, everybody. Elizabeth Longman, 234 Hamilton Road. I have two, maybe three, quick things I'd like to say in my three-minute period here. First of all, to read for you the findings, or at least what I feel is the key finding of Judge Vince Rosier, Superior Court Judge, regarding the election protests. It says in number seven, "Even though there is evidence in the allegations that sheriff may have violated rules, protocols, and all laws." So they found there's evidence in the allegations related to electioneering outside of an election poll site. The law, as it is currently written, does not warrant a full hearing when the alleged context of the violations lack a showing to the outcome determinative. So what they're basically saying is, yes, the sheriff did wrong, but because the laws are written the way they are right now, they cannot go after him under election law. And that would be the key point, that under election law, we cannot go after him. Second point I'd like to make is, when we took this to our state representatives, because it's literally just to adjust the law, we noticed that Senator Jim Bergen had little packets he gives out for the opiate crisis, little bags containing gloves, you know, needle exchanges. There's the little Narcan things that are like forty-eight dollars, one of them, the other one is five dollars. And these are things that he just gives people who you know are caught up in that opiate crisis. It's the best help that we can offer them as members of the public. And he just gives them out without judgment, for free. Says it's a start for them knowing that there's a way out of this. I wish there'd be more of that available, not only from our leadership, but somewhere in the county where we could have things that we could give to those who are suffering during the opiate crisis, so that maybe we wouldn't lose as many lives, and maybe we wouldn't have to lock them up in jail all the time if they find out that there's a path to help. And those packets, I think UNC University, University of, the Carolina University, put together those packets, and it has a QR code where they can scan to access help. It's really great work Senator Bergen has done for North Carolina. And we in Harnett are not taking advantage of it to help our local citizens. We sent him there to do the work, he's done the work. Now let's bring the work back here and help our citizens. We just went through a horrible crisis dealing with dogs and all of that, and someone in mental health, not mental health, but opioid crisis. And the dog catcher says she goes to so many homes, no one thinks about what happens to the animals in an opioid-addicted home.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Mr. Alan Longman.
Yes, hello. My name is Alan Longman, at 234 Hamilton Road in Barn Level. The reason why I'm speaking today is a couple, behalf of a couple of things. We could start off with the drug problem, and we could start off with the jail system. The jail system should have a social worker assigned there, so people could be instructed what to do, and how, and what to do when they get out, and what their rights are when they're there. The other thing is, that the money aspect that the party has been looking at is incorrect. The real aspect is that it costs you more money doing it the way you're doing it, over a hundred and fifty million dollars a year. That you need to supply people with treatment, mental health treatment, while they're in jail and while they're in prison. That will save you money, because trying to get it on the outside is nearly impossible, and you have a lifetime of criminals being born. You don't need, you need to treat them at the time. The social worker is extremely important, because you need scaffolding for when they come out, so they are actually prepared for the world beforehand, where they can decent what, know what to expect when they get on the outside, and what help is available for them. The other problem I have is with the water tower that you're having. If it's from groundwater, are you taking the steps necessarily to make sure that the groundwater is clean? Are you filtering the water that's going into the tank? And are you expanding a little bit on the chemicals that are in the water supply? For instance, medical waste and medical water is a major problem in our drinking water. It affects our health. We need to look at that more. Also, when it comes to mental health, we need more established businesses which deal with mental health problems that are better. We need more competition. We need also to have stronger laws made. One of the problems in mental health in the state of North Carolina, rated one of the four worst in the nation, is that they think they're allowed to stock people's drugs and force them to become to a therapy, to come see their psychiatrist. Unfortunately, when they do that, they don't always have transportation, especially rural areas, where they could be there on time, because there's no public transportation. The other thing, they are stocked with the drugs. They end up being problems in society, because they don't have their medication, and we all know from even Harnett County, we've encountered trouble and even deaths because of it. That they don't, they're not getting treated, and that they're being shocked by police or being fighting with law enforcement, which is a danger to both. It's unnecessary to legislate, there has to change the law that's there, so they're always given their medicine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Roger Farina.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Roger Farina, 306 Pine Valley Lane. I live in Barbecue Precinct. Last year, I stood before you during one of the open sessions talking about the redistricting of the Board of Commissioner of Districts and the voting precinct districts. I wanted to reiterate some things that are going on out there. I live in Barbecue Precinct. There's 12,000 registered voters that live in Barbecue Precinct. There's 2,500 registered voters that live in Stewart's Creek. During the last election cycle, on Election Day, we had an hour and a half wait for people voting in Barbecue Precinct while there was no waiting in Stewart's Creek. We need to really take a look at realigning the voting precincts. Back to the county commissioner of districts. If you look at the ten census tracts out in Western Harnett, there's 62,000 people that live in those ten census tracts. That's the equivalent of Chapel Hill, and we have one seated representative out by us. Northwest Harnett has 25,000, Dunn area has 28,000. I've stood here and asked about getting twenty-four, Highway 87, road named, the Western Harnett Industrial Park has sat empty. We've talked about new zip codes. I'm going to be seriously looking into Western Harnett succeeding from the county and taking care of ourselves. If those ten census precincts became a county, we would be the forty-third largest county in this state. If that's not going to work, I've heard, well, you should incorporate. I don't want to incorporate, because that's taxation with extra representation, or extra taxation for extra representation. It means more taxes on us. We shouldn't have to deal with that. Another thing we should do, maybe, look, take a look at, is being annexed by Lee County. I already live in Sanford, so why not? Thank you. I hope to take a look at that issue. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Mr. Jerry Rivas.
Jerry Rivas, 364 Twin Ponds Road. Brian and Patricia Finch. Any of you know who they are? Do you know? They were the couple killed by Deputy Lartart because of his negligence and blatant stupidity. The other day, I talked to a young lady who was at the thrift shop and witnessed the accident. He hit that intersection over a hundred miles an hour with no lights, and gave one blip of a siren just before he hit the truck. And she has not been talked to by the Highway Patrol, and she will not talk to the Harnett County Sheriff's Department, because in the past, she has been treated so badly by Harnett County Sheriff's deputies. She's scared to death. She's scared to death that if she comes forward, that something is going to happen to her, possibly your children. But I'll tell you who she has talked to. She's talked to the Finch's family attorney. Get ready. Get ready. Call your insurance company. Have them raise the limits of your liability, because six million's not going to cover it. And I have, for ten months now, had this bogus criminal charge hanging over my head because of a lie that's been perpetuated by Wayne Coats and his department. The district attorney has subpoenaed a video from this detective who allegedly investigated it. This man has ignored a subpoena from the district attorney. My lawyer has tried to subpoena it. Nothing doing. Mr. Snow, you're familiar with a Supreme Court 1963 decision, Brady versus the State of Maryland? And that's exactly what this is. It's a Brady matter. They're denying me due process. A year over a lie? Where is my right to a fair and speedy trial? What about that? I have been to court seven times, only keep being told, come back, come back in a month, come back in two months. And your sheriff revoked my concealed carry permit with a bogus hearing. He sent two deputies to my house with this paper that made it look like it was a subpoena, and it wasn't. And supposedly, a hearing, but I was never apprised of my rights. That was a legal hearing? Well, guess what? The black market is still strong, because I bought a bunch of pistols and rifles since. The legal system in this state, and particularly this county, is a joke. But, oh, man, the taxpayers are going to be on the hook for millions.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Harwell, you were good? You did not want to speak? Yes, sir. Alright. Mr. Richard Chapman.
I'm Richard Chapman, 5220 Christian Light Road. I wish to speak in opposition to the Agenda Item Number 11 in the printed Agenda pertaining to the hiring of a lobbying firm at a cost of $60,000 a year, plus fees, over the course of two to four years. That's not a huge amount of money, but it's not chump change either. And it's for a project that fails to define the problem it wants to solve. What specific project is of such great importance that we need a hired gun? The proposal isn't clear, nor does it say what would be the consequences to the county if we do not hire a lobbyist. It reads more like a convenience rather than a dire necessity. Our elected delegation already knows what Harnett's needs are, and presumably is working to fulfill them. That's what they were elected to do, and that's what they're trying to do. Why do we need a hall monitor to make sure they do it? How too would we measure the success of a lobbying firm? By the number of parties and legislative hearings they attend? Absent a mission and a means of measuring outcome, why are we doing this? My concern might be allayed if Caros were a veteran outfit used to lobbying on behalf of counties and cities, but by their own admission, they have no county or city clients anywhere in North Carolina. Why do we have to be the first? I'm also concerned that they could lobby in a bipartisan fashion, given the vagueness with which they addressed that issue in the questionnaire in your Agenda packets. Quote, "Our constant presence at legislative meetings and campaign events allows us to have the ability to update the county on relevant developments as they unfold." Campaign events? They want to go to Harnett County campaign events? Really? Have they ever been to Harnett County campaign events? People in Harnett County barely show up for elections. The bottom line is that this proposal isn't persuasive that it's needed, that it would accomplish anything substantive, or that it's worth the cost. I urge you to rethink the idea. There may be some merit there, but I don't see it in the proposal. A little rethinking wouldn't hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, next, and finally, I have Mr. Scott Tartt.
I live at, on Highway 401, 1437, or 7247 US Highway 401. I have a business in the county called Forever Clean. And we've been servicing Harnett County from, it says 2005, which is seventeen-plus years. And we dump our waste here in Harnett County, which is one of the reasons that I came to Harnett County in the beginning. We have at least 150 employees that are employed here in the county, on an average of $60,000 a year income. And recently, but not really recently, all through time, with Harnett County Regional Water, I guess that's what we call them now, we've had nothing but issues, and we've had nothing but problems. They make it almost impossible for us to dump our waste there. They're constantly closing down, they're constantly giving us excuses. We try to hold them accountable, but we can't find anyone that will hold them accountable. I don't know, I don't know why or how. We can, we can get to that, but I've had them even tell me that it's a courtesy for us to be able to dump our waste in Harnett County. When you try to work something out with them, I've tried to sit down and have meetings with them to try to make it more convenient for the, for the haulers of Harnett County to, to be able to do business with Harnett County. And they won't have meetings with you, they won't try to come up with solutions to make it easier. They're, they're above reproach. You try to have a meeting, they say no, or, one time, like I said, the courtesy thing, they told me it's a courtesy for you to be able to dump in Harnett County, when reality is, all we're trying to do is to serve the people of Harnett County and the surrounding counties in which we, we sell water to. And it's been like that. We, we try to work it out. You can't talk to them. I mean, the only way they communicate with you is if they, they shut the plant down. In other words, you, you get a text message, "Plant closed." They won't give you a date of when the plant's going to be opened back up or anything like that. So it's just been, been constant. And all we're trying to do is bring a service to Harnett County. They got a Google rating of 1.3. If me and you had a Google rating of 1.3, our businesses would be shut down. But there's nobody I can find in Harnett County can tell me why, or nobody I can find in Harnett County to hold them accountable. And I think it's time we figured that out, because I'm confident I'm not the only one. Thank you.
Sir. At this time, I will now close the public comment period. We will move on to Item Number Six, a public hearing for a proposed text amendment to update the county's UDM. Mr. Jay Sykes.
Sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, good evening, Commissioners. Jay Sykes Development Services here presenting our first item, which is a text amendment. This is a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, an internal request in reference to how often, basically how often, a land use amendment should occur. Within the existing ordinance, it talks about following the rezoning process. Those happen more frequently. As you know, majority of our development regulations are geared towards land use classifications. A land use amendment does occur sometimes when, when rezonings are favored, and it may be a go against the plan. The plan, of course, that we're updating now, and with the new, new map will be our tool, and the Commissioner's tools, and the Planning Board's tool to, to make justifiable rezoning decisions. But however, sometimes, they can be amended and requests for amendments from, from what we've seen the last year, year and a half or so, from, from private parties. So we just wanted to just basically make it a little more official within the ordinance to set up two specific dates. We've looked at neighboring jurisdictions, and they usually, it's about a three-month review. So looking at a three-month review for staff and for Planning Board, that would, that would have put it about, at least, at least twice a year. So that's what we, that's what we proposed. Planning Board liked that idea as well, because they wanted a little more time to look at these. That's typically the process that we use to review cell towers and also large planned unit developments. So it, and then again, it also kind of works well with the way that neighboring jurisdictions seem to use that time line as well. So in Article 12, Section 2.6.1, we're just adding the, the Senate's, "These amendments shall be considered twice a year, at least a two-month staff review time, and specific dates shall be published by Development Services beginning of calendar year," which, of course, we set our meeting dates after, the County Commissioners set their meeting dates and so forth. Again, staff recommends approval, and Planning Board recommended unanimous approval as well, and no one spoke in opposition.
You good?
Sir?
You good with that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
At this time, I will now open the floor for the public hearing for the proposed text amendment change. If anybody would like to speak for or in opposition, that was your time. Seeing nobody move, I will now close the public hearing for this proposed text amendment. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve this text amendment change.
I have a motion for the text amendment change. Do I hear a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion and a second for the proposed text amendment change. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Hear ye unanimously, Madam Clerk. Moving on to Item Number Seven, public hearing for a zoning change, Plan 2301, 0001, land owner Charles W. Harwell.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sarah Arbor, Harnett County Planning Services. So our first request for rezoning tonight is Plan 2301, 0001. Property is being requested rezoning from Commercial to RA20R. The applicant owner is Mr. Charles Harwell. The property is approximately 9.15 acres, located on NC-87 South, just south of the NC-27 junction in the barbecue township. The parcel is currently undeveloped and generally densely wooded. It is an environmentally sensitive parcel, parcel, excuse me, due to the proximity of a nearby creek. There are wetlands present throughout the parcel, and a considerable portion of the parcel is located within the 100-year floodplain. Utilities available to the property include public water and public sewer, approximately 22,500 daily trips for the section of NC-87 South, and the site distances from the site onto 87 are described as good. And just a little background about this property, really, it appears that it was zoned from Commercial to RA20, excuse me, from RA20R to Commercial back in May of 2009, and has not been developed for commercial use since that time. It also appears that, you know, the environmentally sensitive areas land use, which is currently the predominant land use of the property now, was not a land use classification that we had at the time. It came later with a, with a comprehensive land use plan update. The zoning vicinity map, you can see this property is surrounded mainly by RA20R, which is the requested zoning. It's a little bit of conservation zoning located to the north. The land use classification vicinity map shows this property well within that environmentally sensitive area, with a little bit of low-density residential as a part of the property as well. In the compatibility chart, you can see that the zoning RA20R in the land use, environmentally sensitive areas and low-density residential have very compatible uses. Moving on to the evaluation, staff found that the uses permitted in the requested zoning district are less intense than the uses permitted in the current zoning district. It may result in a lesser impact to the surrounding properties than if developed in the current zoning designation. Staff found that these land use classifications, and development in areas of wetlands and minimized property damage in areas subject to flooding, the permitted uses in the requested zoning are more compatible than the uses permitted in the current zoning district. The requested rezoning will enhance the public health, safety, and general welfare with a potential development that is compatible with surrounding property uses, the zoning districts, and the underlying land uses. The request to rezone the property from Commercial to RA20R is not a small-scale rezoning, and does not need to be evaluated for reasonableness. As stated in the evaluation, the requested rezoning to RA20R is compatible with the Harnett County land use plan, and would not have an unreasonable impact on the surrounding community because of the compatible existing residential uses and the zoning classification in this area. It is recommended that the rezoning request be approved. As the March- At the March 6th, Harnett County Planning Board meeting, the board voted unanimously to approve the project and there was nobody there to speak in opposition.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will now open the floor for the hearing for the zoning change. This time, if anybody would like to get up and speak for or in opposition, now is your time.
Yes, my name is Alan Logman, 234 Hamilton Road, Bond Level. The thing I, I don't like about buildings, she said marshland, flatland, is this floodland? Is this a flooded area that happens when you have storms, rain? You're gonna put more residential houses in that area? Doesn't make any sense to me. In the flood zones that we have, and since the weather's getting worse each decade, it, it's good to sit there and use this land for other purposes instead of putting people's lives in danger for when there is a massive flood. It could be used for recreation, it could be used for trail paths, it could be used for anything but building housing. And I'd like to see more of the flood zones being zoned for the parks and stuff that we need. We might as well use the flood zones for that purpose and that purpose alone. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing nobody move, I will now close the floor for public comment for the zoning change. I want to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the zoning change.
I have a motion to approve the zoning change. Chair will second for discussion. Anybody have any discussion?
I'm familiar with this property right off of 87. Is this, was this formerly John Saul's property?
Yes.
Years back?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And I believe that it would be beneficial for it to revert back to its previous zoning of RA 20R.
Any other comments, discussion? And I'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear ye unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Okay, and for the, the next item on our agenda, we have Plan 2302, Zero 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 One. It's another request to rezone from RA 30 to commercial. The owner and applicant is JPF Properties, which is the owner of the PJ's Truck Body and Equipment. The properties for the requested rezoning are approximately 10.91 acres located on Hotchus Chapel Road in the Aveares Borough Township in Dunn. Site is a currently vacant site, undeveloped land, which was previously used for agricultural purposes. Surrounding land uses consist of single-family residential, several non-residential uses as well as undeveloped land and agricultural uses. You can see there in the vicinity map, I apologize, this is a property to the north of the current operation for the, the PJ's Truck Body and Equipment site. Our understanding from the applicant is that they are looking to expand to this site just here to the, to the south and east. As far as public utilities available for the property, there's public water available. There's an annual daily traffic count of 1,400 daily trips along this section of Hotchus Chapel Road. Site distances from the site onto Hotchus Chapel Road are described as good. The zoning vicinity map shows that there are two different zoning jurisdictions as well as several zoning classifications in this area. There is some Dunn industrial just in commercial just to the north of the property, Harnett County Commercial there to the south, and a little bit of RA 20, residential surrounding the property as well. Land use classification vicinity map shows that this property is located within our employment mixed-use, land use classification, which is a land use classification that is designed to be located near the major thoroughfares and include prime locations for economic development. If you take a look at the compatibility chart, you can see that the uses in the zoning, in the commercial zoning district, excuse me, and the underlying land use are very compatible. In staff's evaluation, staff found that the impact to the surrounding community is reasonable as there are several non-residential uses in the area. Staff found that the requested rezoning to commercial is compatible with the land use classification, employment mixed-use, employment mixed-use land use classification that encourages economic development and the uses permitted in the proposed zoning support economic growth. The requested zoning would maintain the public health, safety, and general welfare due to the areas existing commercial uses in the area as well as the potential site improvements that would be required. Staff found that due to the land use compatibility and the proximity of the proposed zoning to the subject property, this rezoning request does not need to be evaluated for a small-scale rezoning. The requested zoning to commercial would not have an unreasonable impact on the surrounding community based on the compliance with the county's land use plan as well as an existing non-residential uses in the area. Therefore, it is recommended that the rezoning case be approved. At the Planning Board hearing, the Planning Board voted unanimously, five to zero, to recommend approval of the rezoning and there was nobody to speak in opposition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open the public hearing for proposed zoning change, case Plan 2302, Triple Zero One. Would anybody like to speak on this zoning change? Seeing nobody move, I will now close this zoning hearing, the public hearing for the zoning change, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, based on the request being compatible with our Harnett County land use plan and the unanimous recommendation by the Harnett County Planning Board, I would make a motion that we approve this requested rezoning to commercial.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second to approve this proposed zoning change from RA 30 to commercial zoning. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear ye unanimously, Madam Clerk. My final.
Okay, and our final request for rezoning tonight is a request for, for rezoned property from RA 20R to commercial. The owner and applicant is the same as the, the last case, the JPF Properties LLC. The property is approximately 8.88 acres located on Robin Hood Road in the Aveares Borough Township in Dunn. Parcel is currently vacant and unapproved. Surrounding land uses consist of single-family dwellings, undeveloped land and agricultural uses as well as several non-residential uses, which include a solar energy facility, educational services, a communication tower, and outdoor advertising sign. There are no public utilities available at this time for the property. However, water could likely be extended to the property in the event that it was developed for a non-residential development. Annual daily traffic counts for these sections of Robin Hood Road and Fairview Road are unavailable. And site distances on the property on both Robin Hood and Farm View Road are described as good. You can see on the zoning vicinity map that this, there's some RA 20R located to the north. However, there's a lot of industrial zoning to the south and just in the very bottom portion of that map, you do have some Harnett County commercial zoning as well. Again, this property is located within our employment mixed-use land use classification, designed to be located along major thoroughfares for economic development. And the uses that are permitted within the commercial zoning district are very compatible with the uses in the employment mixed-use. In staff's evaluation, we found that the impact to the surrounding zoning, surrounding community is reasonable due to the existing non-residential uses in the area. I found that the employment mixed-use land use is a development node that encourages opportunities for economic growth along major thoroughfares. And the uses permitted in the commercial zoning district support the intent of the underlying land use. Staff found that the requested rezoning would maintain the public health, safety, and general welfare due to the areas existing non-residential uses as well as the potential site improvements that would be required. Staff found that the request to rezone this property from RA 20R to commercial does not need to be evaluated for a small-scale rezoning. As stated in the evaluation, the requested rezoning to commercial would not have an unreasonable impact on the surrounding community based on the compliance with the county's land use plan as well as an existing non-residential uses in this area. Therefore, it is recommended that the rezoning request be approved. At the Planning Board's March 6th hearing, the Planning Board voted unanimously, five to zero, to recommend approval of the rezoning. There was nobody present at the hearing to speak in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, open the public hearing for proposed zoning change, Plan 2302, Triple Zero Two.
Name is Alan Logman, 234 Hamilton Road, Bond Level. What is the capacity of water that's gonna be allowed to be used on that land? Because we don't have water and we need to establish and put our energies into infrastructure so that we have more water to supply these homes, to supply these businesses in a ways and a means in which to clean the water. We're behind in the waste plants. We have trouble with them, as we said in other Commissioners' meeting. And we just need a way in the planning of the land that you're gonna have proper water facilities to be able to supply them with the water they need. Because once they start their business, they're gonna need that water and they're gonna take it from other people, use of the water, as the pressure goes down. So the point is, are we gonna catch up with the water first? Are we gonna keep extending into businesses that might use a large amount of water compared to even residential houses? Thank you.
Can staff speak to any of that?
Sure, so it sounded to me that the, that the main concern was that there won't be capacity if a, if a water line was run out that way. I mean, really, when we're talking about capacity and, you know, availability questions, those are better questions for Harnett Regional Water. You know, just one note that, you know, if, if water were to be extended to the site, that, that is something that, that would, a cost that would have to be absorbed by, by the developer. I, I think that's maybe the best way the staff can answer this question. Okay, thank you.
I don't have anybody here from HRW at the moment either, so.
We, we were just trying to figure out that whether it's Dunn or actually Harnett Regional Water that will support this area. It's so close to, to the city of Dunn. I'm not sure exactly whether this is covered by our area.
Thank you. Mr. Lockman?
I would just add. I would just add that all of the things, all of the requirements for water, sewer, and all those things are all worked out at the site plantates. I would remind everybody that we're talking about a rezoning request tonight. The things that would be involved, such as water, sewer availability, all of those things would come at a later date when the actual property is developed, for whatever the situation, for whatever the business that may go on there. So we're a little premature, but I think we're right. I'm sure that either between Harnett County or the city of Dunn, big enough business came there, I think we would be able to accommodate it at some point, I'm sure. And, and, and like, and like Ms. Arbor said, those costs would be through the, through the, through the project as a whole.
Thank you, sir.
I'd just like to make a point that even if it's Dunn water, whether it's Dunn water, Lillington water, Coats water, if it's any of those, it's Harnett County water. And if Harnett County does not have the facility enough to get new customers onboard, unless they get their thing expanded, then we can't have new things built here.
Anybody else? We'll now close the public hearing for the proposed zoning change of Plan 2302, Triple Zero Two. We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this request rezoning.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request for Plan 2302, Triple Zero Two. Open for discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear ye unanimously, Madam Clerk. Item number 10, consider approval of a memorandum or MOU between trustees of CCCC, the governing body of CCCC, and the county of Harnett regarding the Harnett County Promise Program.
Yes, good evening. So last week, you heard a presentation by John Matthews with CCCC regarding the new MOU for the Harnett County Promise. So I won't go over every single detail. I was willing to keep it a separate agenda item because it was a draft as of last week. We had a couple more minor changes, so I'm just gonna go over just the brief few changes that are different than what was presented to you. So one is on page one, under the, the fourth whereas, we had to update the dates. We actually had the, the old date still of 1920, and so, so we had to update it to 23, 24, 25, 26. So just making that correction. Further down on page one, under A1 there, I wanted to make it clear. So we had talked about needing to maintain residency for 12 months leading up to the semester. And we talked about the effect that, that separate system, the RDS could, could have an effect on that. So someone could be living here 12 months and may not qualify as a resident under that RDS system. But the other qualification I wanted to make in that is to also maintain residency in Harnett County while on the program. I think that's always been understood, that you had to be a resident up until and also maintain residency. But since we're making these clarifications, I added that sentence in there as well. So that's the only difference. And then the last one that, and change from last week, under page three, under the term, just had to update, shall remain in effect for the 2023 fall semester and then prior to the fiscal year 2028 budget being passed, the review to data. So we had to update the, just update the years on that from the old MOU. But otherwise, everything is the same as, as last week and just be the, the new MOU going forward with the, the Harnett County Promise.
Yes, sir. Questions or comments for Mr. Appel?
I have a comment. Thank you for making that change on residence.
Yes, ma'am.
Because these are taxpayers' money.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think they should be spending money on someone else to stay in another county to go to school here in Harnett County. It's a great program and I want it to last. And it will not last if we spend the money out like that, but thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion.
I move.
Can you please clarify your motion?
I'm sorry. Move to approve, yes.
Thank you. Second, ma'am. I have a motion and a second to approve the MOU between CCCC and the Harnett County Promise Program and the governing body of CCCC. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear ye unanimously, Madam Clerk. Item 11, discuss and consider approval of a lobbying firm. Mr. Trout, would you like to kick this off?
Sure, I'll kick it off. So a few comments that I'd like to make are that what I found and the reason that I were considering this is it was something that in, when I worked in the city of Topeka, we had a lobbying firm that worked for us. They would be up on the hill to represent us, testify at committee meetings to track issues that we were concerned about. And they did that throughout the week and then they would provide us a weekly update. And I would be able to receive information on items that were of concern to us. I then passed that along to the, the city council and they were able to be updated on the items that were of concern for us. I found it to be very effective. The city of Topeka had been using a lobbying firm for probably three or four years even before I got there. And we had it the full four years that I was there, and they probably still do. You know, we found it very effective to make sure that our voice was heard when we were up there. As much as I will plan to attend. As much as I will plan to attend a meeting with our representatives once a month at a minimum, they are not running around trying to talk to the other members that maybe would need to gather support for, for an item that we feel is important. And that can be a legislative change, or it can also be a funding request that we have. And so, they're able to do that, they're able to get with the others that are there, to be able to get to the right people that can help us in order to get those things done. What I'm seeking is the opportunity to work with the lobbying firm for just short of two years, basically, for the rest of the long session and the short session, and then come back and evaluate and determine if it's something that you feel is something you need to continue. Also, with regards to the fee, I'm seeking basically your approval to contract with the firm, and then I'll negotiate with them and make sure that we get the best price possible for their services that they're willing to agree to. I think that, you know, it can be beneficial. They can also help us to set up meetings that if we, as either the board of commissioners or myself, would want to, to pursue a particular issue, they can talk to the representatives and set those meetings up. I know it's something new, and I understand the concerns about doing it, but I think that it is something that we should consider.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. Members, you've heard the comments made by Mr. Trout, and had the proposals submitted to you as well. If you've had time to look over those. If you don't have any questions, I will entertain a motion.
I have one. I'm it. Um, Mr. Trout, I thank you for all the work that you do for this county. But Harnett County and North Carolina does not like Topeka. And I want to say, I am not in favor of this, I'm going to vote against it. Simple because I'd rather see the money going to the teachers' supplement pay or something. We have never had a need for lobbyists, and I don't really see the need now for lobbyists. I'm only one vote here, but my vote is no.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I can appreciate the gentle lady's opinion. I, I'm just looking at another thing, we've gone for years without one, and if there's something new... There's two things here that you said that I, I liked what I heard. One is that this is a two-year trial, we're not married to them forever. And the other is, it's time to think outside of the box and see if they can bring something to the table for us that we're not getting that. So, I, I, I understand, you know, I, I see her point of view. I also, I think it's time to, to look at things a little differently. I would vote yes.
I, I just want to make one more point, and, and I understand what you're saying. Uh, but, uh, other point that I want to make is this. If you are interested in us having a lobbyist here in Harnett County, why you bring us just one company's name, lobbyist company's name? Why didn't you bring us information on more than one so we could look through that information and then make a credible decision on which one we were hiring? It's not the idea of a lobbyist so much, but you bringing us information on one lobbyist.
Well, Commissioner McCoy, I sent the information on all seven firms that submitted their RFP to you for review.
I didn't receive it.
Now, if I understand it right now, you, you're just asking to proceed forward with it, you, you haven't identified one yet, is that correct?
No, I, my recommendation is to hire Kairos.
See, love over here. There's many more things we can do in this county with that kind of money. And we certainly need to address the teachers' supplement pay and other issues in this county. And I think we have a great relationship with representatives that we have that represent Harnett County. I have never seen any, anything that we have went to them for. They haven't always agreed to everything, but it was an agreeable decision to let us know the reason that they, that they couldn't do it. We, we are not like Topeka. I just don't see it, but I'm only one vote. That's for you all to vote on, because I'm, I'm not voting on it.
Would any other members like to speak? Would the pleasure of the board be?
Mr. Chair, based on the explanation provided by Mr. Trout, I will make a motion that we, I'll make a motion to approve his request for a lobbying firm, and we'll see where it goes from there.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second in order to approve lobbying firm of Kairos. I will open the floor for discussion.
And I'll, I'll kind of follow up on Commissioner Morris's comments in that I do know that this is a direction that we have never pursued in this county, but at the same time, I do know how important it is to be able to really follow up and keep track of what's taking place in the legislature and in Raleigh. I will agree that our representatives, our legislative delegation does an excellent job of trying to keep us informed, but at the same time, they have, they have more on their plate than to try to make sure we're in tune with everything that's going on up there. They certainly can't be at every, every meeting that they probably need to go to to keep up on all the, all those things. So, I think anything that would help to keep our local leadership informed so that when we need to pick up the phone, make that phone call, have that conversation of something that we think that would help our county and our citizens, that we have the background information to be able to do that. So, that's why I would, that's why I would vote to support this.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
I have four. I will call for another vote by show of hands. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four. All opposed? Motion, Kat, carries for the majority. Brings us to the county manager's report, Mr. Trout.
I have nothing additional other than I need approval of the budget amendments and also the tax rebates, refunds, and releases, please.
We'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the budget amendments as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here is unanimously, I will now entertain a motion to approve the tax rebates, refunds, and releases as requested, pardon, as requested by the tax administrator.
So, move. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the tax rebates, refunds, and releases as requested by the tax administrator. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here is unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
But we have an item from New Business today. Legal Department requests the board approve the renewal of Blue Cross Blue Shield contract for twenty-four FY.
Yes, Commissioners, it's brought under New Business, so the, our broker, Mark Three, presented a new contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield, which has been our provider for employee health insurance for a number of years now. But there is a deadline in order to get this contract back, and so we're bringing it before the board today. Again, we've been operating under one-year contracts due to price changes that occur with the insurance business every year and making new selections and so on. Now, the good thing is with this year's contract is it's our best renewal we've received in four years. So, actually, our cost per employee per month is going, going to decrease by four dollars per month, so we actually are going to have some savings this year when it comes to our premiums, which is good. Obviously, it's, it's based on our per employee amount, so it depends on the number of employees, but you're looking, obviously, over around five hundred thousand dollars if you take about a thousand employees. But again, we're going to have savings this year as compared to previous years. And then we're also adding two Health Map RX programs for next planning year. One's for medical weight management, and others for plans for diabetes. So, again, even with the costs going down, we're actually getting a little bit of extra out of this program. So, I want to bring this before the board, ask to approve this contract to enter into another year with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Thank you, sir. I want to first, I start saying that I apologize to members and that some of the sentiments aren't, they really have New Business, but this came out right after the agenda was, be so kind of time-sensitive and imperative that we had this on here. So, I will now ask, what is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we approve it.
I have a motion to approve.
I got it.
A motion and a second to approve the renewal contract for Blue Cross Blue Shield for twenty-twenty-four. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here is unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, board members.
Mr. Snow, do we have a need for closed session?
We do not, Mr. Chairman.
Amen, thank you, sir. Well, entertainment, pardon me, it's a long night, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
I move.
I have a motion and a second, we are adjourned.